Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all that's gathered here. And we ask you, Father, entrust our leaders with wisdom. And God help us, Father, as we do business with the city, to be pleasing in your sight. Lord, we love you today. We're so thankful for all you've given us. Bless this nation and help us through this world. We love you, thank you, give you praise for all this. Christ holy name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Daniel. We're going to call. Here. 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 Here.
All right, we are going to skip all the way to resolution take, first. Resolution 25 to 95 approved for Matthews renovation. Just give us a brief discussion.
Yeah, you want to go ahead and do that right now?
Yeah.
You want me to speak on it more, or do you guys just want to get any questions?
I think it's pretty straightforward. They hired them a year ago or so. They, we then asked them to help us find an architect after they found that they were able to be saved, basically, or fixed. The architect came back, looked about $2 million price tag on, not just the floor, but the whole building, renovating. And then, basically, we had a construction manager look at that. They helped two and a half to just cushion. So we're basically just moving funding for this project, or earmarking funding for the project out of on the side.
Any, any questions? All right. Motion, motion by Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 Jackson?
Aye.
McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
No. Resolution 25 to 95 approved for one.
Yep, all right, thanks. All right, just for the record, Mr. Jackson has stepped off the dais. We'll go back to approval of monthly bills. Approved September 2025 monthly bill. We have a motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 Aye. Monthly bills are approved five to zero. Approval of minutes, we'll take all these together. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMaster's. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Minutes are approved five to zero. Set public hearing, resolution 25 to 60, set public hearing for abatement of unsafe conditions for 10 railroad street northwest for Monday, November 17th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m.
Yes, this unsafe building, we just request you set the public hearing for November 17th. We did make an amendment to the current resolution to reflect the amended budget not to exceed $40,000.
All right, any questions? All right, ordinance 24, 4594 approved zoning ordinance rewrite zoning map, set public hearing for November 17th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m.
Yes, this is a set the public hearing for the zoning rewrite for the zoning ordinance coming up and just seeking.
Any questions? All right, thanks, Mr. Bowman. Public hearing, resolution 25 to 83, public hearing to authorize mayor to sign SBLI LLC project development agreement.
Of course, they, they shared the last meeting. There may be some additional information they want to provide.
David wanted to share.
Do you have any questions?
Do you guys, you can share a little more.
David Horath with Land Innovations. We went through a pretty thorough feedback last week. If y'all have any questions, we're here to, to highlight any additional elements of the, the agreement.
This question sounds like it's going to be great for the city.
We're looking forward to getting started.
Y'all heard much feel enough times on good developments and incentives that hopefully it'll stick for the next four years.
I'll kind, I'll kind of say it from there. All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on this item, can speak now. All right, so no one here, so we will consider the public hearing closed. We have a motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMaster's. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 83 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 93 approved for Rock the South, Decatur event investment agreement, and we did have a.
Yeah, we just requested that be.
Motion to table. Second.
Till.
There's a motion to table for Mr. McMaster's and.
Well, it needs to be October 30th at 9:30 a.m.
Yeah, I'm going to say that, but motion to table, second by Mr. Pike, and this would be tabled to October 30th at 9:30 a.m., which would be a special call council meeting. One more.
You love it.
All right, we do have a motion to second. Any discussion on the tabling? Nice, roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
Aye. McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye. Resolution 25 to 93 is, is tabled with a vote of four to zero, with a special call council meeting October 30th at 9:30 a.m. We debadment, there were no changes.
Yep, no changes. Just requesting you assess the cost of these to the properties.
All right, we'll take things as one. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMaster's. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
We debadment are approved four to zero. Resolutions, resolution 25 to 84 authorized preliminary approval of municipal utility board, plus 26 expenditures expected to exceed 100,000. Motion by McMaster, second by Mr. Pepper. Any questions for Gary? Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
Aye. McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
All right.
Resolution 25 to 84 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 85 approved city parking deck inspections proposal for QR McNally. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike.
Nothing different.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 80 bound approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 86 approved capital purchase of one leak vacuum truck.
Second.
Department, motion by Mr. McMaster, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 86 approved four to zero. Resolution 25. I will say, Daniel, that D Y has been. Resolution 25 to 87 approved purchase of mini excavator for forest head for trail maintenance. Motion by Mr. McMaster, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 87 approved four to zero. Do we know lead time on that tomorrow? Lead time on the excavator?
End of the pad. I don't know, maybe four weeks.
And then we'll get it out.
Yeah, the plan was to send all.
We're doing a leak truck tomorrow, aren't we? All right, resolution 25 to 88 award bid 25031 for Jesse Lewis Smith Park improvement, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner?
Aye.
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 McMaster's?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye. Resolution 25 to 88 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 89 approved intersection improvement in Bell Line Road at Centcharon Drive. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Resolution 25 to 88 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 89, approved intersection improvement Beltline Road to Centron Drive. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? The turn lanes, have we made any progress on both the Beltline? And then we have the same issue with stacking really.
Yeah, we've gotten the design for the turn lane, and I believe it's going to be the, with the three knots, we're going to add Centron Drive. We're going, this proposal, get them to do some design on it. And we'll try to lump those two into one project for a A-trip project.
Any other discussions?
Speaking of A-trip, don't we have to get one complete fulling up for another one?
We do.
So you know where that's leading?
I do.
How's that looking?
Not going to make it by November 14th.
Which is the deadline for application.
So we're going to be at least another year out on A-trip application?
Yes, sir.
And is it a pole delay?
Uh, no. It's just getting through Aldott. Once we get the plans approved by Aldott, Aldott actually bids the project, manages the project.
All right, we do have a motion to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vladimir.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
McMaster's.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 89 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 90, approved Wilson Morgan Park access improvements. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters.
We're just through some discussion with new parks and Rex Director and planning. We're kind of changing some motions on how to access the park, and this is just doing some redesign.
Any questions? We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vladimir.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
McMaster's.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 90 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 91, reappoint Secaella Gulston as municipal judge. Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? You did a fantastic job. We're grateful to have you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Vladimir.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
McMaster's.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 91 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 90, approved notice of public hearing for adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters.
This is just an update from 2009 to 2018.
This is just to set the notice for the public hearing.
Yeah, there's going to be two notices in the newspaper. It'll be heard on November the 17th, yeah.
All right, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vladimir.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
McMaster's.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 92, approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 94, approved participation attempt for Christmas downtown. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call.
Vladimir.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
McMaster's.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Resolution 25 to 94 is approved four to zero. Resolution 25 to 95, approved Kerry Matthews renovation. We did that. Approved four to one. Ordinances first reading, ordinance 254619, adoption of international property maintenance code 2018 edition.
That's the same thing we just talked about. Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some adjustments to it in the code, some exceptions that we made, but those are all be listed. If somebody's curious, they can go to the city clerk's office and look at that.
All right, any questions? All right, ordinances, ordinance 254617, approval of Geo Morin series 2025A and Geo Morin series 2025B. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Vladimir.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
McMaster's.
Aye.
Pepper.
Aye.
Ordinance 254617 is approved four to zero. The swearing in of elected officials in organizational meeting will be held Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Ingalls Harbor Pavilion, 802A Wilson Street Northwest. So that will be our next regularly scheduled meeting. We likely will have a special call meeting October 30th at 9:30 a.m. as we mentioned before. We will move into public comments. Sorry, anything else from your city? All right, we will move into our public comment section. Same rules that we always have, three minutes, with one minute to wrap up, and apparently you guys want to come speak. I guess I'm required to call on you.
I'm Jacob's mom, and I will cry if I say much, so you don't have to worry about me saying much. I want to thank every single one of you guys up here. You all came in new. You had to deal with a lot of things you didn't anticipate, and you did it with dignity and grace, and I'm proud of all of you, especially the one in the middle. I'm his mom, and I love him, and I'm proud of you, Jacob. That's all.
I'm Jacob's brother Braden. I'm going to keep it brief so I don't get emotional like that either. I just want to thank this council. Has, has not been said enough in this room how great of a job that you guys have done, each and every one of you. And I'm raising a young family in this town, and I'm just so thankful for the work that this council's done. You've really dealt with some difficult things, and a lot of people have made a lot of comments. I think a lot of people think they could do this job better than you guys have collectively, and it's just not the case. It's difficult to be in you guys' shoes. So I just want to thank you, Carlton, thank you, Hunter, thank, thank Tab, thank you, Jacob. I'm going to leave it at that before I start crying. Thank you, Billy, thank you, Kyle. I look forward to this next council keeping up the great work. Thanks.
Hello. So we are here, the last meeting of the term of this council. This council will go down in history for the past two years, the way the council has responded to the death of Steve Perkins, John Scott, Jaden Desjardins, the way you didn't move and handle situations. If you look around the room today, you leaders are winning the way you wanted to. It's about 90% white, which is your comfort place. You may think Sixth Avenue partly being done and a halfway done Wilson Morgan Park and a Rock the South show coming is what the people will remember, but it won't be. Money doesn't buy what our city needs. Our citizens wanted care and concern for them, period. They wanted to be put first for once. They wanted their needs took care of first, but all you did is sit up here and make decisions on the people who bought your seats. So Decatur will continue on this pattern with a heavy dark cloud over it. First Timothy 6:10 states, "For the love of money is the root of all evil." Unfortunately, money won out this election term again, which means the evil will continue. To the new council, excuse me, to the new council, most of your seats were bought as well, but you can choose to have your own voice. It's hard, and I haven't seen any of you do it yet, but you can learn to listen to the people of this city, the people who live here, and not just the people who look like you. We have a whole city of awesome people that get neglected here because they look different than you, they speak different than you, or maybe they have a different lifestyle, but that doesn't make them any less important than you. Lastly, to Billy Jackson, I commend 29 years of being the best thing this city has ever had. You have been here for each and every citizen that you could be. I have learned so much from watching you. You have performed your role as a councilman with grace, dignity, values, and morals. That's how you also live your life. I am thankful to call you my friend. Your city loves you.
Thank you. Sarah Cottrell Perkins.
As Sarah gave her speech, I looked at every one of you guys' faces when you all had smirked, as if what she said meant nothing, which it probably didn't, but you need to do some soul searching. I want to sincerely thank you, Mr. Billy Jackson, for your honesty, integrity, and genuine care for the people you serve. Your leadership stands out because you always put the community first and make decisions guided by fairness and compassion. When this first happens, yeah, go to sleep, Hunter. When this first happened to Steve Perkins, Mr. Billy Jackson was the only councilman in the very beginning, the only councilman who showed compassion to the Perkins family. The rest of y'all didn't give a damn. It's refreshing to see someone in public service who listens, follows through, and truly wants to make a difference. Your commitment and dedication did not go unnoticed. Thank you again, Mr. Billy Jackson, for being a voice for the people, all people, and for serving with such great heart and integrity. Hunter Pepper, November 4th, regular citizen buddy.
Well, hello. I wish that Mr. Jackson had have been able to stay because I did want to thank him for being an honest and true man. It's hard to see him go after 29 years, and I think I have to hold myself responsible and apologize to him for the lack of presence from people who look like him up until the Steve Perkins situation. By us coming in, we were able to see a lot of underhanded things that the rest of you were doing. On that note, Jacob, goodbye and good riddance. As far as the absent mayor, no one's surprised. We said from the very beginning that his legacy would go down, and he is. He's the worst mayor Decatur has ever had. As for you, I met your father, and he said that he blames the citizens of District Four for allowing you in. You are the most unprofessional, immature, childish person who could ever sit up here. I did want Sarah to get that seat, but I'm already hopeful that Pam is going to be much more of an adult than you ever were. These past four years, you have shown your true character, and I will back on what Cottrell said. As of November the 4th, you're a regular citizen buddy.
Let me start off by saying y'all did a great job. I got you.
I will just take a few deep breaths.
Okay, yeah, your mom's, your mom's humble me, tried me to be humbly, good bit. Let me start off by saying I'm proud of all of y'all. I live in Hartsel, you know, but Hunter's my son, so I'm definitely going to show up for something like this, and the reason this proceeding is 90% white is because the white folks got out of bed and came. You know what I'm saying? It, it could be 190. It could be 190%, whatever. I'm just saying that's the reason. I'm not embarrassed to say that. We got up and came for our families. You know what I'm saying? I hate to say it like that, but it just is what it is. I'm proud of all y'all. I'm proud of Hunter. I love you. I'm not going to stand up here any longer because I'll, I'm, I'm, I'm just proud of you. I love you. You're doing a great job, and I can't wait to see what the future holds for you. You're the youngest councilman ever in Alabama. Nobody can ever take that away from you, no matter what they say to you, and you will be a citizen no matter what the fourth. You know that, and you're a great upstanding citizen, and I'm proud of everything you've done.
All right, that's all we had. Anything else from council?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you know, this is, I don't want to get emotional myself, but the last five years have been nothing more than honorable. It's been such a, a great privilege of serving up here on the staff with all of the financial that I'm up here with, and it's just been, it's been a privilege unlike no other, for sure, to have the opportunity to serve the citizens of the city of Decatur. I said I was going to keep this sweet and short, but I don't know if any of you remember our first meeting, but at our first meeting, I had no clue what I was doing. Stacy Gilly and Stephanie Simon approached me, and they said, we're going to walk over here, we're going to do this. The first two people that I did not know that approached me that wanted to congratulate me was actually Jacob's brothers, Nathan and Greg, were the, the two first people to approach me at the meeting. They walked up, took their hand, and they said, man, we want to meet you. I said, okay, nice to meet you, and I just moved along because I didn't know what I was doing. I was excited for my family to be there. I was introducing myself to everybody, trying to get to everybody and understand how this is all going to work, because I ran off of listening and learning. And we sat down, you know, after we got torn in, we sat down on that whole thing, and we, I'd already met with everybody at the ALM meeting in Montgomery, which was quite interesting, by the way. They, Carlton was real big on it, because I was like, how do you use their phone a lot? But as we're sitting there at the meeting, there was a, another resolution, there was the time that we have to elect the officers, such as the council president and the co-chair, whatever you want to call it. And as we're doing that, I yelled out motion. And I yelled out motion, I put my hand down just like that, and everybody kept looking at me, and I was confused, and Jacob leaned over and said, you need to say move, so moved? Motion for approval. And I said, motion for approval. I didn't know what else to say. Everybody looked at me for a minute, just like we are now. And that memory will forever live in my head. We voted, that was the first meeting that I ever voted at. That was the first, that was the second meeting I ever attended. I attended the meeting, they certified our elections, which was pretty interesting. But other than that, it's been a privilege these past five years, and I couldn't be more grateful for the leadership that the rest of the council has shown, the mentorship that they've all shown to me, and the friendships that I've made out of this.
Yeah. You know, when, when, when people run, you, you never know who you're going to wind up sitting next to. You never know what's in store, because I think if some of the stuff we've dealt with this term, if I, if I could have foreseen it, nobody'd ever know me. I'd still be sitting over there on Prospect Drive doing what I do. I couldn't imagine going, have, sharing these last five years with anybody else. And to, to be able to sit here as Mr. Jackson, who has served 29 years, I mean, that's unheard of. He's to be commended for that. It's not easy. It, it is not easy. Folks who, you know, we've had moms and dads and brothers and sisters and wives, they know. The general public, a lot of times, doesn't see what we come home with, what's on our minds, what's on our hearts. Hunter, you, you alluded to it, some of the questions I get asked all the time, what's it like to be with Hunter? And usually it's said in jest, but Hunter, you've grown a lot. You have. You know, I wish the mayor was here. He, he's done a lot as well, and that's to be commended. First two-term mayor since Bill Dukes down there. Jacob.
Oh, boy.
This city owes you a debt of gratitude it will never be able to repay. Leadership is to be commended, the way you carry yourself in the good times and the bad, the things we had to get in and do that we weren't prepared for and didn't know how to do. I thank you for your service to this city, and I thank you more for being my friend. It's always good to be last. Let Carlton get some of that out of the way. But look, it's been an honor to work with each and every one of you, many of our directors, city employees. There's not a book written to tell you how to do this. There's not training that can truly train you how to do the job. So it's a lot of, you learn as you go, and you have to rely on good people, and each and every one of us I know has good people. You too, your family's here today. I think that speaks a lot. So definitely want to thank everybody for their service. Mr. Jackson's got 29 years serving on the city council, and absolutely should be commended for the job that he's done, because it is long, and it's not easy, and it's a sacrifice. Sir, so thank you for his service to the mayor. I know he can't be here either. Nine years, and a lot of growth has happened in nine years. Carlton, I won't, I won't say much, because I can talk to you in a couple weeks, but Hunter, Carlton said it, you've grown a lot, and we appreciate your willingness to run at a, at a young age and to serve. You've done a great job. Obviously, there, there's a lot that goes into it, and I think you would, you would say there may be some things you would do differently to do it again, but it'd be, but you, you have served, and that's to be commended. It's not easy to serve. It's always easy to tell people how you expect them to serve, but it's not easy to serve. Jacob, Carlton nailed it. The city owes you a ton of debt. I'm extremely thankful for what we've been able to accomplish the last five years. I don't think it would be possible without you. I think you've set the tone. I think you've set the standard very high, and I think the city should be thankful for that. I know each and every one of us are thankful for your leadership, your mentorship and your friendship. So thank you for the job that you've done. Big shoes to fill for the next council, the next administration, but I hope you guys know you can ride around town and see the tangible benefits of your service to the city. So thank y'all for that.
I'm not going to say much, but one, one story I tell a lot is, people are like, what is it like to be on the city council, Gary? You'll appreciate this story. And I say, you know, early on. And I say, you know, early on in our administration, there was one week where on a Monday, we approved a hundred and sixty-five million dollars of bonds to basically redo the entire sewer system of, we run a forty-year, forty-year plan, and we moved it to a ten-year plan. It's a lot of money, a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. Y'all see the project going on every day, we're still working through it. In the same week, I had a lady call me, and she was concerned about dogs at the dog park that were running into poles and that they could get a concussion. And she wanted us to put padding at the bottom of it. And I say that to say that's what the city council is like. That was in one week. And that issue for that lady was just as important as the sewer issue we had. I mean, it is a broad job, that, from potholes to rec centers to three M lawsuits to, you know, whatever, I mean, cutting the grass. I mean, it is, you learn a lot, you got to have good people with you, and certainly thank you guys for, for everything you guys have done. I mean, it's been a lot of fun, and it's been very, very difficult as well. And I think, you know, the last two years have been tough. I want to just make one claim, this is probably not real, I think this is going, but I find it very ironic that we've sat up here and taken a beating for two years and listened and listened and listened and listened and listened and tried to do what we thought was right. And yet, when it was our turn to talk, the three people who have a problem with us got up and left, not, not listening. And that's been the case for two years. So I do, I am proud of what we've accomplished. I think when you do, you're able to, I didn't run for this job to sit here and do nothing if I would have got done after what became a five-year term and couldn't ride around and point to this, 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 and this that we've, we've been aggressive and tried to do. That was not why I ran for this office, and I hope no one ever runs for it just to have a seat and, you know, have a title. You better be running because you want to move the needle in a positive direction, and we'll be able to ride around this city for a long time, knowing what those improvements were. I really, last thing, city employees, I have a newfound respect for you guys. Every four years, you guys don't know, you know, like, sorry, I'm actually happy I didn't run again. It's sad. There should have been a lot you hold in. But you guys do a great job, and you guys don't know for four years what the next administration say. We don't need a C F O. We don't need Parkinson's right. We don't need grants anymore. We don't need community development. I think they always think we need a fire department. But you just don't know, and that puts you guys in a tough, in a tough position every four years. But man, this city is blessed to have our city employees. You know, you guys have sat in here for, for these meetings, and some of you have taken, taken some heat. Alan, I know, has been on the hallway a few times, but I just really want to thank you guys, city employee, for everything you do for the city. We, we're the ones standing in front of the day, but you're the ones getting the work done. I'm excited about the next administration. I think Mayor Lawrence and the council are going to be good folks for you to work with, but just really want to thank you all for your service to the city. Man, I've enjoyed it. You guys, you two guys keep up the good work, keep the movement going. Barry Bullard is my replacement. I'm excited for him. I think he's going to do a great job. I'll be there to encourage you guys. With that, anything else?
Yeah, I don't know when to speak, but you stole some of the thought. This council has listened and listened to diverse ideas for, especially the last two years. Y'all are to be commended to accept that's not part of y'all's responsibility to have to sit and be personally attacked. It's okay to have diverse ideas, but y'all have been very patient and very receptive. But on behalf of the city employees, we appreciate what y'all, what y'all have done for us. Y'all, y'all have made us a priority, and we appreciate it. We want to make it a priority for you. We look forward to the next four years, but we would be remiss if we didn't say thank y'all for your service over the last five years. And I personally want to say thank you, and I know other employees will do the same. So thank y'all very much.
All right, with that, we'll stay. This is something that I didn't want to say. I wasn't going to bring it up, but.
One more time.
One more time, one more time. These, these last two years have been the most trying times of my entire life, and I'm sure the most trying times of everybody sitting on this diocese and everybody sitting on this side over here. You guys understand everything that all of us have been through the past two years, and all of you have been through that as well. It has been very, very hard going home and talking to our families and having to, having to have them understand what we are going through on a day-to-day basis, because it's not just every Monday, it's every day of the week. And it's been very, very, very difficult. But I just want to say how grateful I am for each one of you up here on this diocese. And Carlton said one thing, you don't know who you're going to sit next to, but Carlton looked down and got me.
Y'all show back up, y'all better show back up the thirties.
Thank you for the thirties.